Maybe.
There you go.
Welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting of July 27th. We'll start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I apologize for the five-minute late start. I was running a little behind today. But we'll go right into the agenda and we'll go into the review of items for consent. In the review, in the items for consent, we have minutes of July 13th. Comes payable manifest of $38,034.70. Payroll manifest of $51,457.79. A land use change tax warrant for tax map 10 lot, map 10 lot 179. And a junkyard license renewal. Do I have?
I make a motion to approve the items for consent.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
I have a motion by Mr. Bullock, seconded by Mr. Byron. Any discussion on that? Hearing, none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, all those abstain. Motion carries. Three zero zero. So with that, do we have any items for other business?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to have a discussion about seeing if we could get the fire chief in to discuss on some of his vehicles that he has and what their status is and stuff like that. I'll explain when we get to it.
Okay. Sounds good. Is there anything else for other business? Hearing, none. We will have public input at or around 6:30. And so with that being said, we'll move into the administrative report. Jason.
All right.
How's it going?
Not too bad. So first item is an interesting one. The, this is a request to purchase tax-deeded property on Lampert Drive. Kevin and I had a meeting two weeks ago with the property owners who are joining us here, the adjacent property owners, regarding a small sliver of land the town owns between the two or three, depending on how it lays out, parcels that they own on Lampert Drive. There are two larger lots, each with houses on them, which is a consolidation of some old, smaller lots. One of the attachments I had was a 1920's plan that actually is probably easier to read than our tax map was. One of these lots also has ownership of a small sliver of land next to 3A. There is another small piece that is in between those two. It is less than a quarter of an acre. And as near as we can tell, the ownership of this has been unknown for a while. Apparently, to clean up that mystery, the lot was listed on the tax rolls in 2006 as owner unknown, which makes sense sort of as an outcome of finding it unidentified for your 2005 revow. You know, when you, something bubbles up, the next cycle that you put it into the rolls would be '06. Thus, with no known owner, taxes were unpaid on it for the three years, so it went through the process with the tax collector and was taken for taxes in 2009. It seems to offer no apparent value to us since it is landlocked and quite small. As you can see, the, I put the note in below, the owner of the adjacent properties has requested purchasing it so he can consolidate the contiguous pieces. Since it was taken by tax deed, this is, the board does have the opportunity to sell it based on your authorization from the 1982 town meeting vote that lets you dispose of property taken by tax, tax deed. So, you know, my simplest suggestion on this would be to consider selling it for the amount of the tax deed plus any of the associated legal and filing fees as well.
This map doesn't show me a lot.
Yeah, welcome, welcome to, welcome to our world. Okay, the tax map is useless. So try, if you look at the one that's called Lampert map, that is the 1920 plan.
Which is the? Second one, right?
Which is the first one. It has like a yellow sliver, then there's a white sliver, then there's two larger yellow pieces. What, the piece we're talking about is that white slice between the yellow. That's what we own.
What were these, old camp lots?
I think they were.
When they were subdivided back in 1920, they made them a little.
You can't build on them.
Yeah, all those little ones.
Yeah.
Like the lot that I have, the bigger lot that I have is actually four little lots.
Mm-hmm.
For nine Lampert Drive is actually consolidated for little lots. And then five Lampert Drive is two lots.
Right.
And then I do own the lot on the Holiday Hill also.
If you could, for the record, if you could identify who you are?
Wrong the mic.
Okay.
Thank you.
So you own the lot at the top up on 3A?
Mm-hmm.
And then we own the next sliver?
We own the next sliver and then he owns the lots below that.
Those say six?
On the old map, it's, yeah, it's six lots. Yeah, it's two old and then four.
Yeah.
Is your house the only one down there?
That's dish two.
Yeah, both of them.
There's nine Lampert and five Lampert, both house lots.
I wish Brent was here. We could ask him what happened in 1920 when he was there.
Poor guy, he's not even here to defend himself.
What's the acreage?
Of that, of that little one?
Sure.
Point three.
Point three. So they all probably right around that point three acre?
Well, no, because the other two now are of, if you look, we've sort of sketched out their, you know, the 20, 23, 23, which is the two older two lots. I mean, we show it, I don't even know, of course, we don't show that with anything marked helpfully on our tax map because it's still too small. Though the 23, 21, the four consolidated lots we're showing is about 24,000 square feet. They're, they're small enough that the map is showing them, the tax map is showing them as square feet rather than acres. So, yeah, this other tiny piece is, what, like 90, 94 by, 40 by 94. So it's.
So I can see, okay, so there's a house down near the end. That's your house?
Mm-hmm.
Both houses are at the end?
No.
Because I'm looking at.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Here is, okay, if you look at this in larger form, it is squinting at it on your computer.
Yeah.
This 23, 21, which is four old lots, there is a house on that lot.
Okay.
This 23, 23, which is two old lots, there's a house on that. There is nothing on this little sliver by 3A because there's not enough room for one. And there's nothing on this one.
Okay.
So.
I thought that was the house.
Oh, yeah. No, no, we, we're only talking about, there's a house in this section, there's a house in that section.
Who owns all the rest?
Someone else.
Okay. It is all owned?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, this one was the mystery slice that came up.
The thing down the end is listed as a stucco bungalow.
Oh, well, in 1920? It may well have been in 1920.
Other lot, right?
Yeah, the one that's like down at the end.
That's on my focus.
Oh, that's right.
That's, that's the stucco. It's actually just a foundation though.
That's what I was just about to ask you.
Yeah, it's just a foundation though.
It's where the lighthouse is, right on Grand Ave? It's that road down.
Do I have any questions, comments from the board?
So, so the legal fees would just be added to that amount, yeah?
That, that would be my thought, is that, you know, we pull the back tax amount because that's on the tax deed, that 1148.99, and then we have the various, you know, legal fees to get a clean deed for it, the filing fees that, you know, that we would pass through.
I have a question.
Yep.
The back taxes right now, I think you said are 17-something?
They're, what, 1148?
1148, okay. That is only for the three years, though, that it was put on, right?
Right.
Is there any tax accrued in the other years than the three that it was put on?
Um, there could be.
Which means you don't know.
Oh, no. The, the, I, there, I mean, there always is. I mean, any, you have, you have, you take it for one year, you have other years it's been on the books, and in, and in theory, there are all of the years and the intervening 10 years that you could also, or whatever it is, nine years.
The town owned it in that, in this particular case.
Right. But, but, but if the town hadn't owned it, you could have otherwise collected taxes on it. I, well, I mean, that's, I mean.
I think that, to me, is a foregone issue. I'm just asking are there outstanding balances on taxes prior to the three years that?
Um, no. Because what, what ends up happening, when we take something for taxes, we take it for the year that is owed, and the other intervening years get wiped off the books because you would have, you're right, you have three years there.
I understand.
Right.
I, I clearly understand this.
Yeah.
But there is also the prior years. Now, the prior years are supposed to be made up, or any outstanding tax balance is supposed to be made up by the sale of the property. That's why I'm asking a question.
Yeah.
If there's prior tax revenues that the town didn't make, then my question still stands.
Yeah, you would have the taxes from seven and eight, 2007, 2008, because the way this works is we put it on the books in '06 from time unknown to get it onto the books. So while it was on the books, it accrued the taxes in 2007, 2006, 2007, 2008. And you're right, that when we, you took it in 2009, seven and eight kind of disappear in a puff of smoke in our world, and what's documented is the '06. So in theory, you know, yes, you are correct, that there were taxes that we wrote off for those two years. I can't speak to what happened for how many years before '06, anything was out there. I can barely speak to what happened in '06.
The $1,100 represents the value in taxes only for what year?
2000s, those were the 2006 taxes. Because that was the year that it was taken for back, for unpaid taxes. And so it was, if it was taken in 2009 for unpaid 2006 taxes, we had on the books seven and eight, 2007, 2008 taxes, that when you took it for six, went away.
Went away? Doesn't make sense.
Yeah, they, they, the amount goes away at that point that goes off the tax collector's books?
Oh, it does, because you've taken the property.
Because you've taken the property.
And I understand that, and that's not my point. My point is, should we be collecting the taxes for any amounts that we do before 2006 and for 2006, seven and eight? That's my question in a nutshell.
And in a nutshell, I agree with you before he answers, unless the property is worth less than that.
Well, he's assessed the property at 7,500, so you can figure it out.
We, we have it on the books at 7,500.
I did some research on this prior.
Because that's what Avatar did, right? That's, they're the ones that put the value.
Yeah, that's, yeah, and they just mathematically will say it's point three of an acre, so, you know, they'll put the tax on it. You're, you're, you're welcome to go before, the problem is, I have no idea how many years go before 2006 that it was untaxed. So I can't give you any finite number on that because I don't know what the history of it was.
Okay.
So, yes, the town lost an indeterminate amount of money for an indeterminate number of years.
But we do know from 2006, seven, and eight, what the tax val, value was.
We would be able to pull seven and eight if we needed to, yes.
So here's my last question. If this is a third of an acre, how is it $1,100? Well, probably $800 and something dollars, and then the rest is interest?
It was probably, it was probably interest and penalties, yeah. Because all of those other things that add on for interest and, you know, we charge, we, you know, the penalties that are charged, we still have to do the deed research, so all of those things would be assessed on. I don't know how it was built, put together in, in that time from six to nine. Obviously, that all proceeds my time here. So.
You haven't been here forever?
No, it just feels that way sometimes.
What do you think, Frank?
I try not to. It's too difficult at times. So my, my personal thinking is that when we, when we first assessed the property, I'm going to call it in 2006, anything before that, I don't think our records are going to show, to be honest with you. From 2006, seven, and eight, or am I saying seven, eight, and nine? I forget which years.
You're saying six, seven, you're saying six, seven, eight.
The three years, we should be assessing the value of the taxes that are outstanding, plus the interest that accrued on it, for those three years, not up to present.
Mm-hmm.
Because that's the assessed value. We just had a case where we had a house where we charged for the interest that was due, right?
Right.
So my feeling is that for the three years, we should collect the base taxes that are due, plus whatever the penalty or interest was for those three years. Now, obviously, I don't know what that number is. I don't know what it, whether it compares, it doesn't compare to the value of the property. I've got no idea to, to make a decision on that right at this moment, because I don't know what that total sum of back taxes, the base back taxes plus penalty and interest is. That's my thinking.
It's a process, right?
It's a process.
It is. I mean, like you, like you just said, as far as what we, you know, the interest that we just collected, you know?
Well, yeah, I mean, we can figure out what we took off the rolls for seven and eight for it. That should be in tax collector's records.
Well, we sent out bills for seven and eight.
We, yeah, so we have a fi, a certain.
I don't know the who, but you sent them out.
Right. We have a certain number that came off of her books for that time. So in theory, that number should be less than the 1148 for each year. Obviously, the furthest out year would be the most expensive year. So, I mean, if you, in round numbers, you call it 3,000. We still have it on the books for 7,500. So, I mean, those numbers, based on what we took off of the books from the tax collector, we can pull those numbers fairly easily.
Yes.
Hello.
What are you thinking? What do you want to do? I agree with, I agree with you, that, I mean, yeah, the whole, it's, you take it for the year that's three years past, but essentially, you're scrubbing off a three-year tax bill. Well, that's, that's the whole reason why every time, we always would rather everybody pay their tax bill than have to take their property, because it's a lot more work.
So, I mean, if you are all generally in agreement with that, I think then you make, you know, you make a motion that, you know, to offer it for the, the tax, the deferred taxes that.
For what years?
From '06, '07.
Six, seven, and eight?
Six, seven, and eight. Six, seven, and eight, the, the tax-deeded amount plus the amounts in seven and eight that we wrote off in seven and eight.
And what else would you need for fees and stuff like that on top of that?
The associated legal and filing fees. I can't tell you off the top of my head, but that's, I mean, those would be sort of revenue-neutral.
What would it be, a quick, quick claim deed or something?
Right, that'd be a quick.
Or warranty, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, it wouldn't be, on our end, it wouldn't be much more than an hour of council's time.
That's $15,000.
Okay, never mind.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, so, you know, so if you were to go that direction, that's obviously, that's a number that I can sit down and pull with Terry from her system, review with you guys, and see if that number still makes sense. And we don't get, you know, we're not sitting here revisiting this two weeks later.
So I'll make a motion, and the Board of Selectmen hereby offers, what is the tax map and lot number?
Um, 23 dash 109.
Tax map 23, lot 109, for the sum of the 2006, 2007, 2008 back taxes plus penalty and interest accrued for those three years, as well as for costs of legal and filing fees.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second, so now we can have some discussion if we would like. Is there any discussion?
Does that motion cover, in your mind, Jason?
Yeah, I, I think that gets what we asked for. We asked for everything that was on our books that came off the books, the '06 taxes that we, we deeded for in seven and eight.
Right.
And that it's not your intention to add penalties from 2008 to 2015. It's simply what was on our books at that time.
Correct.
To clear that transaction.
And that was, that was the value that we took the property for?
Right.
My logic?
Okay, that's fine.
Okay, and then, of course, the sale of the property is something else again.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Okay.
So, I'll say this. Can we do this legally without posting it?
I already went through that with him.
Yeah.
At the bottom of the thing, it says, and it, that was a question that I asked. The town passed a, passed a warrant in 1982 authorizing the selectmen to be able to sell tax-deeded properties.
Oh, all the way down here?
Yeah. Yeah, you can, you can, yeah, tax-deeded properties are the ones that you retain the authority to do what you feel is in the best interest of the town.
I've just never seen them sold without being posted for sale. Do you know, that's, that's why I asked that. But there it is.
Are we obligated to post?
You're not obligated, no, you're not.
I didn't think we were.
No.
Or to have an auction, you're not obligated.
No, no, you're not, no. In this case, it is the best interest, you know, would deem the best interest of the town. So.
Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, call is still vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, all those abstain. Motion carries. Three zero zero.
I'll let you know tomorrow, I'll look over numbers with Terry, and we can go from there.
Thank you very much.
Good, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming in. I think that at 6:30? Six thirty?
My computer says 6:29.
Oh, well.
And that was what I judged my five minutes late by, but it just clicked to 6:30, so I'm going to open the floor to public com, public input. If anybody from the public that wishes to speak, speak now or forever hold your peace for the rest of this meeting. We don't have anybody in the audience, so I will close public input, and we will move on with Jason's report. Now on to old business.
Old business, assessing contract. We talked about this at the last meeting. You asked me to get some ballpark numbers from Avatar. Just for factual background, our 2010 to 2015 contract cumulative price, $238,610. Lauren's proposal for the next five years, $237,050. So $1,560 less than the last contract. And they will still be doing utilities, and that's covered in the update contract. So she gave a breakdown of sort of, and we have this now for, you know, there's part of it that's contract assessing, so that's the routine pickups they do each year, the data verifications for the same approach that we looked at last cycle of doing three years of that rather than spreading it over the four, and then the fifth year, like we have this year, doing the data update. So very similar, you know, we would, I recommend you do the same approach you did this year, this cycle, and try to level fund it as much as you can. So the upshot is, they're basically offering, you know, the next five years at a tiny, tiny bit less than they charged for the last five years.
Questions, comments from the board?
Question, Jason, are they sending you a, a, I'll call it an updated contract?
Yeah, they'll send me a new contract, yeah.
Okay. When do you expect to get it? Before the 27th?
Before the 27th? No. I'll have it next month.
Of August, is what I was saying.
Yeah. Yeah, I should have it next month.
Okay.
I mean, I wanted to have this first level of conversation, which was making sure now that you have this background, that you're comfortable going that route and not going the full RFP route.
As long as we can do it legally, I'm good with it.
Yeah. Okay, so, I mean, that's, if you're comfortable with those numbers and you feel that that's still.
Interest was seen if they were going to be at or around where they were.
Right.
Without being, without a gross increase that we kind of felt last time would make us have to put it out there. So I'm okay with it.
Okay.
Anything else from the board?
All right. I'll get a contract, and we'll jump through the next set of hoops on that.
Perfect.
Do you, are you looking for a motion?
No, I'm not looking for anything, as long as you're, as long as, yeah, I mean, I think.
As long as we're in agreement that that's the direction we plan on moving.
So I can come back and change my mind later than that.
Well, let's just not waste Jason's time by telling him to move forward with getting a contract and then saying, oh, wait a second.
It's okay, the longer it goes, if, if you decide to put it out to RFP, we're getting out of the window where I have to even worry about that.
Are you saying the amount of time we waste?
No. Nope, I am just saying that there's.
Is growing smaller for you?
That there are, there are few things I look forward to less in the last month that I'm here than doing another RFP for assessing, so. And do not take that as a challenge, Frank, to find other things that I also will enjoy less. Could see the wheels already turning over there. All right, FEMA, Blizzard reimbursement. Remember we had, remember it snowed back in February or January?
Yeah. I don't remember that.
Yeah, yeah. You know, it snowed back in January. So paperwork's finally been completed. I did sign off and return end of last week. They've determined that we had $36,802.07 of eligible expenses. There's a 75% reimbursement, so that would yield $27,601.55 coming back to us. Once upon a time, the state used to make up a portion of this as well. Sorry. There was actually, the state had passed a bill last year to catch up on some of the storms from like four years ago. That fell out of the budget. So my guess is that based on past practice, this is the number you'll see. So, that said, this, this is a nice, you know, offset for the expenses we had in that time period. So this will be, you know, I have, one of our meetings in August, we're going to do the full unanticipated revenue acceptance appropriation list. This will be on that list. So, I mean, basically, what happens here is, we have, $650 of this goes to a line in the emergency management fund, and the balance goes back to the highway department to credit salt, contractors, laborers, et cetera.
Okay. Any questions, comments from the board? All right.
The infamous pipeline.
The infamous pipeline.
Ah, the pipeline. So scoping hearings are this week. They are Tuesday, oh, sorry, Wednesday in Nashua and Thursday in Milford. Figured I will be going to the Wednesday in Nashua. I should also note that the municipal coalition has a meeting with the FERC's project manager on this project tomorrow, which is actually an interesting opportunity, sort of came up through some of the congressional staffers that have been pushing hard on this. So I'll at least have a preliminary meeting with FERC tomorrow afternoon with some of my colleagues. At the scoping meetings, they allow elected officials to speak at the beginning. So if any of you have a great motivation to go and speak as an elected official, you have the opportunity at the beginning. That said, some of us in the coalition that are appointed have realized that, you know, in some cases, our boards have delegated us to be kind of the town's lead person on putting all of this together. And that, so for us to try to get into that front-end piece, to get authorization from our boards to speak on the board's behalf at this hearing. So if you are so inclined, that was, you know, I would be looking for your authorization to speak on the board's behalf and in lieu of the time that you would otherwise receive as elected officials at the upcoming scoping meeting.
Unless, of course, we have members that would like to do it themselves.
Jason would do a great job for us.
I've declared a conflict of interest in this matter.
That's right.
That's right. That's right.
I forgot.
That's right.
Now, that doesn't mean to say I may not be there speaking as a state representative.
Yeah. Yeah, the advantage for Frank is that he gets to wear two hats in this case, so. He still gets the elected official privilege.
Well, considering that it'll be during the day, I would love for you to speak on our.
Not tonight, it's at six thirty.
When?
Uh, Wednesday night.
I got training at the fire department.
Yeah, no, I still think you can do a great job.
It's fine, it's all my schedule, so I just need you to vote to authorize me to speak on the board's behalf.
Would you like to make a motion? You want me?
I will make a motion that Jason speak on our behalf.
I'll second that motion. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Stain?
Aye.
Motion carries. Two, zero, one.
Right. The, I'm still sifting through, Kinder Morgan posted their most recently updated plans Friday afternoon with FERC. So it appears that they have a, a station that will be used for blow-off and control of the pipeline that they are projecting to put in Litchfield, which will require a slightly larger perimeter area and a permanent access road.
I thought they weren't putting one in Litchfield.
No, this isn't like the full sort of compressor station, this is sort of a little blow-off control station.
Yeah.
Yeah, their latest plan show one, show one in Litchfield. The Learys may be surprised to find it's currently shown on their property. You know, the other thing so far, I mean, this is a huge document, so sifting through and finding relevant things has been challenging. Overall, in New Hampshire, they have only, they have not had survey access to seventy-five percent of the corridor that they're proposing to use. So there's gotta be a lot of unknown information there. So I'm trying to sift through to see what other notable pieces are in there and of interest to Litchfield. The other pieces, I guess I'd point out, is that the coalition has put together kind of some good notes. The most active people in the municipal coalition are sort of, in some cases, more of the western area, so they expect, these hearings are in Nashua and Milford, so I think they're gonna be more in Milford. We've had good assistance from two of our congressional staffers. I shared with you an extremely disappointing letter from Governor Hassan back to the coalition. I, I, you do hear that I'm saying a very disappointing letter from Governor Hassan, and also she has offered to meet with the coalition, but she can't meet with us until September tenth.
What, at six oh one AM?
Yeah, two forty-five PM.
Till what, two forty-six?
Yeah, it is, her engagement has been very disappointing. You know, Senator Shaheen, Congresswoman Custer have been very active, have both met with the coalition. Representative Ginta is even meeting with us next month. So, anyway, there is a pending hearing that is still pending at the State Public Utilities Commission. They had two days of testimony last week, and it has been continued to August sixth. So this is on a very narrow issue of how much Liberty Utilities needs or doesn't need from this. May I answer any other questions on pipeline issues?
I worked on a Pelham in the industrial park, and there has been a lot of activity down there with Kinder Morgan Vehicles. A lot lately. I don't know what they're doing there, but.
Survey?
One of their stations is there or something now?
I think there is, yeah.
Oh, yeah, I think there is on one of the sections, because the old, the older Tennessee Gas Line goes through part of that, yeah. Interesting.
Okay.
I did add here, and you're welcome to do this now, or you're welcome to wait on it. Police chief and I were talking today, and I realized that we hadn't posted up, there was a request at the last meeting to have the board approve a list of stop signs. So I have the whole list of stop signs. You haven't had a chance necessarily to review and digest the list of stop signs. These are the ones that they have on record as being previously approved. So if you want to approve the list as presented, if you want to wait till your next meeting and have time to take a closer look at where all the stop signs are, we can do that, too.
Might as well move it on to the next meeting. I mean, even if it's in the consent folder.
Okay.
Unless anybody feels differently.
All right. No rush, that's fine. It's there, so we have the list. Last week, we had a Department of Labor safety audit. They came through end of the week before to advise they wanted to set up a time. There's no particular trigger for this. They're simply trying to get through all the towns that they haven't been called in to visit for a actual safety issue. And so it was our turn. Chief O'Brien, as chair of the Joint Loss Committee, met with them on Tuesday, took them through facilities. They were complimentary about what we had in place in terms of documentation and most of the things we had on-site. As you would expect from any of those, there will be a few recommendations from their visit. They should have that reported in a few weeks. In what they did review with Chief when they were on-site, nothing seems overly unreasonable, things like attaching ladders to walls, installing some IWA stations, those sort of things. There were one or two head-scratching ones that I am curious to see if they end up in the report. They had some concerns about some ladders in the fire department, and I observed, these are all people who are trained to use ladders, so, you know. Again, nothing horrifying, they were generally quite pleased with what we had. And I think part of that, you know, I think goes to, you have a regularly meeting Joint Loss Committee, and actually, that Primex Prime III certification, which we renew regularly now, requires for us to keep that, which generates a bit of a discount with Primex, but it also means that we do kind of the onsite assessments and have the documentation regularly, so. You know, it works out when you have things like this.
Okay.
So. If you are looking for some rip-roaring, exciting reading, the New Hampshire Retirement System has a, has finally published their first wave of reports. There is a new financial accounting standard that requires us in coming years to report our share of the overall New Hampshire Retirement System pension liability. Doesn't change what we pay into the system, but it is a new piece of data that ends up being in our annual reporting. They've calculated our overall share of the system liability is zero point zero eight four two zero seven zero four percent. There's a much more detailed report, I put the link there, to the New Hampshire Retirement System reports on this. So, in part, this is a new accounting piece. One of the ways to look at this is to think about, if there was something cataclysmically horrible tomorrow, and we had to pay up our share for all current claims in the system, how much more would we have to put into New Hampshire Retirement to equal out what's there? And that number at the moment is about two hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. So, in some ways, this is when you hear about a system being underfunded, this is trying to get a little bit of a handle on it. This is one way to start getting a handle on that. Obviously, those numbers are moving targets, so every year, those numbers get updated, because, you know, people come in, people go out, people get paid more, people get paid less, and the like. I can throw it probably to you, Frank, you've spent way more hours listening to this than I have.
It's also, it's also a matter of how much is the accrued liability as far as, do the stocks go up or down, or whatever the case may be. The problem with this is, if you think about it, and that's something that I was looking at, trying to figure out, is we owe theoretically two hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. If we, as a town, wanted to pay that off in several years by using.
Fund balance, yep.
We could easily do that. And the question is, and what's most disappointing about this is that we are gonna be paying this off for years and years and years, actually to somewhere in the neighborhood of twenty thirty-nine is when it stops accruing. And what ends up happening is that we're gonna pay much more than two hundred and fourteen thousand dollars into that account, which means that we're paying off some of the accrued liability of other municipalities. Right?
It is, I mean, because it's considered, it's all part of the general hopper, so, you know, this is our share this year. Next year, those numbers will change.
Everybody, the problem is, the way that's set up is, everybody keeps paying into the fund an amount of money to pay for what they know today is the retirement that they have in place, plus an additional amount based on, I think it's like seven point something percent for fire, and what is it, twelve percent for police?
I think that's right, yeah.
Something like that. And then what ends up happening is, you keep paying that off until that whole amount's paid.
Yeah, and, you know, this is, hey, this is the first time we sort of ever see anything in terms of an individual municipal accounting, you know, which is somewhat mathematical effort to get there. But, you know, I mean, when you have, there are other ways that the town indirectly contributes to the system that you don't get credit for. And, you know, a great example is, you know, if I, if I pull my money out of New Hampshire Retirement, when I leave New Hampshire, I get my share back. New Hampshire Retirement keeps the, keeps the remainder, the town share.
Right.
So the, you know, so the town has paid, you know, but the town here doesn't get a special, you know, credit in its ledger for that added amount that it made this year.
Correct. This is also a requirement of the GASP sixty-eight, if I remember correctly.
So, you'll start seeing some new numbers, they'll turn up in next year's audit, but.
You'll see, yeah, you're gonna see these on the audit. I already briefed the Budget Committee on this, so they're aware of it. So they'll see that we have an outstanding balance of two hundred and fourteen thousand dollars or something.
Yeah. In different news, revale update, the data's been now transferred back into our system from Avatar. New values are in place at our system. We also have their comprehensive valuation manual. I'll be publishing that on the web shortly. Hard copy's available in the office, so basically, our new numbers are in, and will be operational for the next tax bill.
Okay.
They sent their notices out, they had their informal hearings like they do, they picked up some things, all of that's wrapped up. So.
They always find something for me, so. Nobody has to, nobody has to tell me what it's like.
Well, if you would stop installing those gold-plated bathroom fixtures.
Yeah, yeah. I can't afford to, I pay taxes.
So, in the pipeline, we'll see where that takes us. That's all I have, unless people have other questions on my informational items.
Anyone? Okay. So we'll move on to selectman reports. Do we have any selectman reports? The only thing I can say is, I attended the planning board meeting last Tuesday, and at the meeting, there, in the review of the master plan, and if anybody wants to know the direction that the planning board's moving in the master plan, tune in and watch, or come on down and sit in. Just started. So, that's it. Items moved from consent, we have none. Other business, fire department vehicle replacement, oh, fire department vehicles.
Yeah. It's been a long, long, long time since the fire department has replaced one or any of their tankers. I shouldn't say tankers, I'll just say fire engines for the better clarity. And what I'm concerned about is that I don't know what the status of those vehicles are. I don't know whether the frames are rotting, I don't know whether they're in good shape, bad shape, whatever the case may be. But those are not the type of vehicle that you can purchase, you know. Oh, okay, it failed, and we'll go out and we'll buy a new one, type thing. It requires a lot of pre-planning and everything else. Thrown into that, there is also the fact that our fire station down there really is not designed to be able to handle what I'll call is the new generation of fire engines. So I think that I see this as something that would take us at least two, if not three or more years to get wrecked, to get fixed, if we have a tanker that's going down, or, excuse me, a fire engine that's going down. We're gonna have to, there's no way we can do it on the turn of a dime. So I guess what I would like to suggest is that we start as a board, planning on what we need to do now, and I think the first step in that would be to hear from the chief, maybe an update as to what is the status of all the vehicles. Does he have a plan, and maybe he already has a, I don't know, on how he would go towards replacing, or what's the first vehicle he sees going, that's gonna be, need to be replaced? And then lastly, how do we? take care of housing that vehicle if the fire station won't support it, the nu- the newer one that's replacing it? So, I think it makes sense for us as a board to start to really think about this and hear from the chief and consider what he's got to say and maybe try and come up with some plans, if they don't exist already. I don't know.
That's a good idea.
Yeah, absolutely.
Can I suggest?
I don't know. All right, go ahead.
Um, that, that is a great topic for your first meeting in September.
No, you can't suggest that.
Well, no, but, but here, there, there is a method to my badge. That's what I'm trying to.
I know a method to your madness.
Yeah, I'm, I, it's not that I'm trying to avoid being there. I'm, I'm, I'm observing it because you will not have the town administrator littering your, your agenda with day-to-day operation stuff. It would be a good chance, you're, you're gonna be in sort of a little window there where doing some strategic planning like that with your department heads makes a lot of sense.
Well, I'm just thinking that my, my thought on it is that this is something that I don't want to see crowded into a budget hearing or budget meeting, because it's just, doesn't lend itself to being able to adequately think it through and discuss it at a budget meeting. So, I'm thinking that this ought to be a discussion on its own. And I think that the sooner we have it, the better it is. Reason being is that if something needs to be done for this upcoming budget, the chief can incorporate that into the budget as he's putting it together now. And then we'll be getting more efficient individual, um, um, no, and then we get, um, you know, everything all lined up for our budget. Um, that will already be put into it based upon what the board determines. That was my only thinking.
Makes a good point.
He does, absolutely.
You're gonna be there.
Killing me.
Yeah, I mean, we don't have to make a motion. We can just have Jason ask Frank when he's gonna be available, see if he can come in at the next meeting, if not, the one after.
I think, I think I'm scheduling him for training each of those next two Mondays. No, that's fine. But we'll, we'll talk about, I know, and I know what you're saying too about getting ready for budget. I mean, he and I have talked about, we, we were actually talking this morning about one of the, you know, one of the equipment issues he has, you know, continues to have in that building is the, uh, is the exhaust system, you know.
You mean for, um, exhausting the, uh, exhaust of the trucks?
Yeah, so when you do the startup on the trucks. And so, that was the conversation that we were having this morning of that, that's gotta be the, one of the priority items that happens. I said, that's fine, you know, you gotta update those numbers and know that, you know, the, the other logical question is, is this system one that can be detached physically from this building and moved reasonably to a new or expanded facility somewhere? Um, so, you know, we, part of that conversation is happening.
Yeah, I guess my only concern, uh, Jason, is that if, God forbid, something happens to one of those fire trucks, we can't get this fixed anytime soon.
Yep.
So, we're gonna be out of commission for at least one vehicle for a period of time. I don't know, I mean, I've heard stories about different things on, happening on the frames and stuff like that. I don't know what the status of those vehicles are, nor do I know how long he expects they're gonna last. I mean, are they being held together by baling, uh, wire and bubble gum? I don't know.
Now, I mean, they're being held together fairly well, um, with.
I would think so. We would have heard of it.
Right, I mean, I think that's the thing is where, you know, and the, the, based on sort of the rough schedule you have, uh, the, uh, the Mack tanker should be a twenty-year life. Um, it went into service in ninety-one, so it's about four years past its replacement cycle. Um, the, uh, Engine Two went into service in ninety-five, a twenty-year lifespan takes you to twenty fifteen. Now, those are the two that are bumping up against the threshold right now. Um, you know, the, uh, um, the.
There was one that went out for frame repair a few years ago.
That's the one I'm thinking of in the back of my mind.
I don't know if that was four or two. It was one of those. I forget which one it was.
Yeah, I mean.
The one that had some rust issues and stuff and they took care of it.
Yeah, I mean, they've been taking, you know, they've, the, the ones that have had serious issues, I mean, have all had, um, all, all had the right kind of care taken for them, knowing that they're not being, um, you know, slotted for immediate, immediate replacement. Um, let me just see here, just looking at, um.
I will say, when there's an issue with them, they're just taken care of immediately.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, the, the, the background is, I mean, those, those are the two, those are the two that you're looking at as being bumping up against the schedule. Um, the tanker, you know, in replacement cost in two thousand thirteen dollars, you're looking at three hundred and seventy-five thousand. Um, Engine Two, again, it was, uh, you know, the last we updated this was two thousand thirteen cost with two and a half percent per year industry increase, so that's about four hundred and thirty thousand dollars. And, and I think those numbers are both low. So.
I forgot my checkbook.
Thinking of money is just crazy.
So, that's what I'm saying. We're not gonna be able to, I mean, if, God forbid, something were to happen to it, we, we're, we're stuck.
And the, and the one that I'm remembering that went out, I, I think it was Tom that had told us that it was like, it was deemed unsafe and it had to go.
If I can recall, I think there was a hole in the tank. And when they pulled the tank out, they found out that there was rot on the frame.
Right, that's something like that I remember. I know there was a frame issue.
Something like that, but, I know it was all fixed and.
But it's not a bad thing to have an idea of what it is, right?
That was my thinking.
You're absolutely right. Like you said, I mean, five hundred thousand dollars is a lot of money.
Get it.
But like you said, the biggest concern is housing it. You know, the fire trucks that we have today go in, you know, the new ones.
Well, then I heard somebody say also, um, that one of the options is you get a quote custom-built fire truck that'll fit into the fire station. And I'm sitting there saying to myself, okay, if the value of a tanker is, call it four hundred thousand, to make it around number, does custom-built now add on another two hundred thousand of customization? I don't know.
Yeah, I know.
You know, and then where does it make sense to say, okay, well, you fix the station rather than fix the truck?
Well, in the other reason where it makes some sense to have that conversation sooner rather than later, if you think big picture about what you've been spending and saving money on, um, or spending money as the case might be, you're coming off of two lease purchases this year in the highway department. Um, the last truck that we fitted out for them as well as the backhoe are both done. Two thousand fifteen's your last payment on those. Um, so those, um, so those combined are, um, around forty thousand dollars. Let me pull up.
You mean in, in, in payments?
In, in, in payments that are not continuing on into next year's budget. So, if you use that theory of assume all other things of being equal, with those payments coming out, you could redeploy those dollars to even, uh, you know, capital reserve with no net change to.
Well, you know, I'm not, I'm not sitting here saying that we need to buy a truck now. That's not what I'm saying.
Mm-hmm.
I just think I need to understand what is the plan.
Yeah.
Secondarily, if I can get a plan, then I can react to it today, and that reaction may be that we modify the station next year. Or it may be that we create a capital reserve account to soften the blow to the community this coming year, or we do something along those lines a little different. All I'm saying is, we, we gotta make sure that we take some type of action or else we're gonna be caught short.
I agree, I agree. I mean, we hear it on the police department end of it all the time with their cars.
Can you set a capital reserve for like a general, or does it have to be a specific item? Um, instead of like a fire truck, could it be like, um, for the fire department, so like retrofitting the station, truck purchase? Can it ca- be like that, or does it have to be?
The other, the other thing is, we already, we also have, if I'm not mistaken, last I saw the figure, twenty-five, thirty-seven thousand dollars worth of impact fees that are available for the fire station, right?
Right.
So, one of the proposals I made was the possibility, and Kevin I know went down and took a look and said it wasn't possible because of the design of the station, to raise the door, uh, the tops of the doors, um, so you can get bigger vehicles in there. Because that's really where they, they hit is, and the doors coming in and stuff. The other option is to build something
On the side?
Just to the side of it, and then go up and over, and maybe you wipe out what's already there. And that way, you create additional height in the existing base as well. I don't know what that costs. I don't know if it's possible, whatever. But there's at least twenty to thirty thousand, and I don't know, when does that expire and when does it have to be turned in?
We're, we're, we're clear, we're clear on that. I know that, that, that money is still, is still available to us. We're not getting close to the seven years on that.
Okay.
Um, so.
But that's at least a start on it, you know, if you know what I'm saying.
Never know where Karen's report is anymore. It's not that report. There it is.
I think it's a good idea.
Anyways, that's just fine.
I really do.
I just wanted to bring it up as a discussion point, that's all. And I figured rather than let Jason wiggle his way out of it, you know.
Thanks. Thanks.
Are you trying to look for something for an answer, or?
No, I'm done looking for answers.
So, he'll try to get a meeting scheduled with Frank on when he can come in? And other than that, is there anything else? Jason, anything else we need to do?
I think I'm all set.
Do I have a motion?
It's too early.
Make a motion to continue the meeting?
Second it.
Motion and a second. Discussion on that motion?
All abstained. I'll, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion to adjourn and second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries three zero zero. It is seven oh nine. The meeting has just adjourned. Thank you for tuning in, and we will see you all in two weeks.